Just for the record, I have had surgery just a few days ago. Moving slow, not feeling all that well. I'm gonna get through as much of this as I can and then I may have to leave. So, just bear with me the best you can.
Not to make a lot, Connie, I'm moving kinda slow too. It's got married two weeks ago.
Well, I'm probably better off than you. This'll heal up quicker than that.
I may have to get up Lee. I may have to. Yeah, I have no surgery, but...
Yeah. Don't make me lie.
We noticed a knot on his head.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll heal up quicker than you. Roll call please.
Mayor Connie Ball?
Here.
Vice Mayor Mike Profit?
Here.
Alderman Jeff Fancher?
Yes ma'am.
Here.
Alderman Roger Gribble?
Here.
Alderman Mike Hansel?
Here.
Alderman Bobby Knight?
Here.
City Attorney Terry Hurst?
Here.
City Administrator James Fincham?
Here.
Thank you. Item three is approval of the minutes of the regular session meeting on June the 9th, 2015.
Slow move.
We have a motion to approve.
Second.
Got a second? Any discussion or corrections? All those in favor indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
Opposes, no? Hear none. Nothing for item four. Move to item five. Communications from interim city administrator James Fincham.
Thank you, Mayor. I just have a couple of things to bring you up to speed on. First of all, the traffic lights downtown, as we discussed last month, we were for a month experimenting with having the old lights, the old single lights blinking as opposed to operating normally to try to see how that would work with the traffic flow. We were getting a lot of complaints about the traffic backing up. So, we tried that for a month. As you've probably noticed, the 1st of July, we returned the lights to their normal operations, which is changing and sequencing and controlling the traffic. What we found was that while that did alleviate some of the problems of the congestion going out of town, leading into town from all routes into town, what it created downtown was a problem for pedestrians in crossing the streets. And so, we were getting a lot of complaints from the businesses downtown, the banks, some of the attorneys and folks that worked downtown about the First Baptist Church was real adamant about their folks having trouble crossing the street. So, we returned them back to normal operation. While it did help with the congestion coming into town, the traffic backing up out of town, it created more problems downtown than it solved. So, we did return that back to its normal working order. The people that liked it blinking don't like it and the people that didn't like it blinking are happy. So, it's one of those deals that when you go one way, you make one group happy and when you go back, you make another. So, we sided with the business people downtown. We felt like we needed, we had an obligation to them and to our pedestrians crossing the streets and so we went, that's the way we went. And so, if the folks that liked them blinking are unhappy, we're sorry, but we have to take care of our people downtown. The buildings that we have for sale, just to bring you up to speed on those, the last couple of weeks, we, for some reason, thankfully, and we've had a lot of interest in them, we've had several people come and look at them. Had one guy on the building over on Blazer Street that made a verbal offer over the phone and I asked him to come in and make that and he hadn't come in. So, I don't know, you know, it's easy to make a comment. Hopefully, it was a sincere offer and he'll come in and we can, we can talk about it. But he, we do have a verbal offer over, by phone where a guy said, "I'll, you know, I'll give you this for that and it's, it's a good, pretty good price if he'll come in and follow through with it." We've had two or three in the last week and a half look at the businesses downtown, some pretty good people that shown some interest in those and hopefully we'll get some, some more activity on those and maybe get an offer on those. We've shown, went down and showed some of those to some people and so the, the activity's really up on people looking at them. And like I say, we've got one verbal offer by phone if he'll just, if he follows through with it. I haven't met the gentleman. He's only spoken with him by phone. So, I wanted to bring you up to speed on that because there has been some, some positive activity and maybe we'll have some good news here in the next month or so on, on some of these buildings.
Well, those buildings moving and ready, there's, are there some of them, if they buy them, they're buying them as is, right?
Yeah, they're buying them all as is. Two of them will have to have some roof repair because two of them have roofs that leak. So, one of them basically has no issues. They're all, you know, dirty and haven't been maintained and have issues, I mean, as far as lots, a lot of it's cosmetic. But two of them do have leaky roofs and those need to be addressed before you can really do anything else in them. But we're, we're very clear about the issues. We don't hide anything. We don't misrepresent anything. We're very upfront with the condition. You take them in, let them look at whatever they wanna look at, answer any questions they have, so, I mean, but they are as is. We're not gonna make any improvements to them, but that's, that's why they're getting such a good deal because, you know, they do have issues. That's about all I have, but Tina?
James, along that line, I am in a conversation with a developer that's, I've also got negotiations with FUD and the Freeman, Dan Freeman and that family?
Yes.
On those buildings and I've got some prices for them to negotiate on where they've cut their prices back. Also on our two buildings, Freddy's and TJ's, he may be interested in all six of those.
Yeah.
I've, I've got some prices, so I'm, I'm working with him on that.
Yeah, we, it's just, I don't know, you, it's like anything feast or famine, I guess, but for, you know, for a couple of months, we had no activity at all and in the last couple of weeks, we've got about three different groups come and look at all the properties and show interest. So, I'm, I'm being cautiously optimistic, especially with the guy that made the offer by phone. You know, hopefully he'll come in and follow through with that and if he does, we'll, we'll do real good with that. So, I'm, I'm hoping to have good news next month on, along those lines. And so, now I'll turn it over to Tina.
Just wanted to let the board know, we did receive a letter back from the comptroller approving our tax anticipation note not to exceed $600,000 for fiscal year 16. So, we're good to go forward on that. And that's all.
Thank you. Moving to item six, there's several board appointments. The first one is council appoints, that's for the board. Glenn Moore Smith's term, I think, is up and it's your pleasure to reappoint him back to serve in that capacity.
He wants it back at that grid.
Far as I know. I think someone did tell me that, yes, he does.
Well, I moved myself to reappoint him back to the board.
My second, Dave.
Motion, a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
Opposes, no?
No.
Okay, we got four yeses and one no. The rest of the board appointments, I appoint those, Robert Williams, that's item B, back on the regional library board, Jim McSwain back on the planning commission, Tommy Crowder back serving on the planning commission, Jay Graham on Parks and Rec advisory board, as well as Chuck Strange on Parks and Recreation. So, I would like to have a motion of approval from the board to allow those to serve, if I could get a motion.
May I come on here?
We have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
Opposes, no? Thank you. Okay, I'm going to pace on item seven and old business item eight and move to new business. I need to ask the board to waive the rules tonight. I was supposed to have had this added to the agenda, but during my medical issues, I failed to do so and that is for the board to consider in front of Walgreens, the property there, to name that in memory of Mayor Danny Wester. And I have family members here tonight when we get to that point, that will share some information with you, as well as I've got a letter from the state of approval and I have verbal approval from the Newport housing authority. The Newport housing authority will not write any type of letters at that time. So, I just, I need a motion to waive the rules to add that to the agenda.
Slow move. Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
Opposes, no? I hear none. I'm gonna move on down to new business to item D, discussion of panhandling in the city of Newport. I had that put on there because of a lot of complaints I've got from citizens and so forth of the, the number of people that's gathering at Burger King and Walmart on the streets of Newport. I just wanted to put that on the table. You've got copies of our rules and regulations that deal with that. What is your feeling concerning, and Terry, could you elaborate a little bit on that for us?
Well, we have, we have ordinances in place, but they're, and I've talked to Chief Schultz about the ordinances in place. They're not very strong. They don't give the police a lot of authority to do very much. They can move them out of the way and they're back the next day or maybe within the next, the same day. I have read over, someone pulled up the ordinance from the city of Memphis and put it in our packet. I've read over it and it's a pretty good ordinance. Obviously, that, there was a lot of thought and effort put into that ordinance. I just shared that tonight with the chief. He hadn't seen it yet until the meeting started. I don't know if he's had time to digest it or not, but it would be my thoughts that we look to beef up our ordinance, maybe in fact going and adopting either the entire ordinance or other parts that we like out of this Memphis ordinance. Those are my thoughts.
I think it would be good for everybody to get a chance to look at it, maybe come up with a, something that we could look at at the next council meeting and, you know, get it to us beforehand so everybody would be prepared and, and we'll just put that on the agenda for the next meetings. Everybody okay with that?
Yeah. That Memphis ordinance, I thought looked good.
Yeah, it did.
Chief Allen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm gonna skip to item F, discussion of city administrator. I want my counsel.
I'd like to recommend that James Fincham be made the full-time city administrator and remove the interim title and I have several reasons for that. First, I think he's done an excellent job. He's performed the job in conjunction with the expressed expectations given to him. He and his staff addressing vitally important issues that might think have been left too long untouched. He's chosen quality people for staff positions, which I think has caused a reflection back on the entire city. Budgets are being prepared on time, which in the past has been a problem. And it also appears city finances are in the process of being turned around. Bills are being paid on time. There's more organization and efficiency coming from within that office. I think he has a strong leadership style. He's a local person. He's served faithfully and loyally to the city of Newport for many years and there's a lot more things I can say about him, but I will conclude with, I'd like to make the motion that we make James the full-time city administrator and remove the interim title.
We have a second?
I see.
Floor's open for discussion.
You know, February the 15th, we had a question from Claude Gatlin sitting back there. Were we gonna send, was this, a job gonna be posted for applications? Response of the attorney and the majority of the board was, yes. You can go look at the tape if you want to. And I like James, I think he's done a great job, but I think we should stay, be true to our word. And there wasn't any one objected to that the day it came up and you can go back and look at the film. And it's, that's a job that should be competitively announced. It's just the right thing to do. I mean, James got great experience, he does a great job, but I mean, guys, let's do this right, for heaven's sakes. You know? If we say something, let's do what we're gonna say. And let's don't change it. We just, you know, we're, we're falling back into the same rut we said we weren't gonna get in. And we just can't continue to do that if we wanna have the type of city that we told, tell everybody we wanna have. We wanna have a great city. Then you gotta do what you say and I gotta stick with it.
I can't remember anything other than this coming up where we haven't done what we were gonna say.
Well, February, if you go back to February 15th, Jeff, it was on there.
Well, I didn't, I hadn't voted anything. I mean, I'm just saying... I know you hadn't voted, but you said... You made the accusation that we've done numerous things that have gone back to the things of the past and I'm just kinda saying, this is the first time something's come up where we said that, you know, I'm aware of what you're saying. I'm, I'm exactly, I've watched the films that replayed twice before we come to each council meeting. Yeah? I know exactly what you're saying, but I was under that point that you just said, "Hey, not only this, but other things, we've reverted back to councils of the past for..." I didn't say that. Well, that's what I heard.
The only thing I'm talking, well, I didn't say, if that's what you heard, I'm sorry.
I must have heard it wrong.
It was my intent. But I said, "That type of thing is the things we cannot do."
There was no official action on our part.
Yeah.
Everybody feel like Mr. Finch has done a good job. You said, Jeff, he's done a real good job. I feel he's been over backwards, not just him, but the whole staff, everybody in his whole staff, has been over backwards. Every time I've needed something, every time I've had a question about things, he's been over backwards. And I don't care like where a man's from or what he's done, whatever, but I know how things are now. The accountability of the city has really been improved. Even the five other aldermen on the last administration, they even agreed with this, that they all voted to give James the opportunity. Well, James, far as I'm concerned, has proven that to me. I don't, I guess he has to rest there. If everybody said he's doing a good job, why don't we make him the administrator instead of a...
Because we said it was gonna be competitive, Mike. That's why we should.
We've got a motion and a second on the floor. Any other discussion?
Well, the situation, will he be resigning as the assistant deputy?
He would have to resign as the assistant chief.
That leaves you another opening for the police department, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. Chief Schultz, let him move forward in the department.
For a matter of discussion, typically, the, in the past, the city has always offered, entered into a contract with the city administrator. Mr. Fincham's not presently working under any type of contract. I'm a buck, he's not. And I would think that would be a, a requirement or a necessary action that this board would have to take to enter into such a contract of employment, to provide the duties that he's gonna provide and the duties the city's gonna provide to him. Typically, that contract is negotiated, or has been in the past, by the city administrator and the mayor. And the mayor's done a pretty, a very good job of negotiating those contracts, which would need to be brought back to this board for ratification, assuming that the board goes ahead and appoints him as the city administrator. So, I would suggest that if, if the motion is passed and he is appointed, then a motion would be made to ask the mayor, and I'll be glad to work with the mayor, to draft up the contract that would suit Mr. Fincham and the board, the board to ratify at a later, his later meeting.
What type of contract? Are you talking about an employment contract of five years or...
Well, that's whatever the board wants to prove.
That would be determined.
It's technically called a work agreement.
Yeah, it, it doesn't, the, the past contracts have not had a term in them. The city administrator serves, the charter says, Mr. Gribble, "At the pleasure of the board."
Yeah.
And, and the prior city administrators have been terminated by a majority vote of the board.
Yeah. Well, you know, I, I was under the impression city administrator, worked under position number one, 001, with a salary grade to be determined and that they had to have certain acceptable experience, certainly fiscal requirements, essential duties and so forth. And as opposed to a separate agreement. Have we ever had a non-competitive appointment of a city administrator?
Non-competitive, I'm not sure I understand what you mean.
But they competed with anyone else. I mean, they were just appointed, period.
Post the job.
One person.
Posting the job.
Without posting. No competition. No.
When the city administrators in the past were appointed, the council had me to sit down with him and draw out a contract or a work agreement for X number of years, X amount of salary, then that come back, back before the board for the board to ratify. That's, that's the way we've always done it.
I speak for the Hampton Police Department.
Sure.
For the past couple of years, the Newport Police Department has worked without a full-time assistant chief. And I call that the umbilicus that tethers me to the police department and recently this council took action to help me with some relief. And I think when we cast those duties on someone, that we, you know, there's, there's an application process for inside our civil service that has to be followed and it requires time and grade and things like that. And I think that the police department has operated wrong enough and limbo. I truly appreciate the job that James has done. When I took my leave of absence, he, he covered for me and I thought did an excellent job. But it, it's time for the police department to know who's gonna be the deputy chief, start the process, get that person in through the civil service process and appointed. But I also think that, that I would love to have the opportunity to hire a policeman that I could work for two years at below policeman pay and not have to worry about at the end of it saying, "Job well done" and put him to work. And I just don't agree with that process. I think that James is more than proven himself as qualified to do the job. I'm, I've not have any bills that aren't paid. I don't have any vendors calling me and saying, "You can order if you pay in advance." And that, that feels good to me. I mean, when you lose contact with vendors that you've known throughout your career and then they call you and say, "Marice, I'd love to do that, but you're not up to date or your payments fell behind or you, the last time we had to beg for our money." And I'm not throwing stones at any one particular person. That's not something that happened overnight and I think we've worked hard for the past couple of years getting that corrected. And on behalf of the police department, particularly myself, I selfishly ask that you all consider moving forward with this so we can move forward and I can have a deputy chief that, that I know serves in that position, that has that title and the men know who that is and who they have to answer to. And it also relieves some of the duties from me, from positions I'm having to supervise now that would be supervised by a deputy chief. And I thank you for your time.
I've talked to every supervisor in every department and asked if they've had any problems with James. And when you can get every supervisor to say he works with him, they know where they stand, he backs them, and they say all the things about him, then that tells me that you're dealing with the whole city, you know? And I, I feel like if you've got somebody that you know what's going on with it, you oughta go forward with it.
We got a motion, we got a second.
Well, again, I wanna say, I'm not saying anything against James. I'm not saying anything against the job he's done and the way he's helped me, everyone else. But I do think this is a competitive position. I do think we should solicit applications and if James is, James is selection, then it's James. But I don't think that we should just go off and start appointing people to positions like this without any competition. Now, the question I ask is still unanswered and that is, have we ever hired a city administrator without competition?
Well, and I'm sorry, I didn't follow your question.
Okay.
I understand it now.
Okay.
The answer would be, no, we haven't. But I would like to explain, we've never had a person be in the city administrator position for...
Two years and three months.
Two years and three months doing the job in the past. We've always had no city administrator, either one's been fired, well, I guess both of the prior ones have been fired or terminated, which left us with no one in any, with no experience and we were starting out from scratch. So, there is a big difference in my mind as far as that situation.
Well, you know, normally in an organization, that would be called unfair competition, that you've given a single individual a step up or an opportunity that you haven't given anyone else and that would want to compete for this job. To me, that would be a plus in terms of it. It's because it's not, you've given, you've selected an individual, you've given them an opportunity that you haven't given anybody sitting out here.
There's one thing for sure, we know what James can do.
Yeah, well, I mean, there's no, there's no question about that. The question is, are we gonna do what we're gonna say we're gonna do and are we gonna be competitive in the jobs that we fill? That's a question with me. It's not an, it's not, didn't have a thing to do with James.
With hiring somebody new, we have no idea of what we're gonna get.
Pardon?
With hiring somebody new, we have no idea of what we're gonna get.
Well, you could hire somebody new, you could hire James competitively.
You look at the publications that we get, Ms. Alderman, those city administrator jobs are a dime a dozen.
Well...
And those people are constantly in and out of those positions.
Tina, roll call on the motion on the second. It's on the floor.
Alderman Jeff Fancher?
Yes.
Alderman Roger Gribble?
No.
Alderman Mike Hansel?
Yes.
Alderman Bobby Knight?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mike Profit?
Yes.
Okay, now we need a motion to enter into a work agreement. As Terry mentioned, that James and I would sit down, work out the salary and the contract and that would come back to you all to ratify. We need a motion and a second and approval for me to carry on with that.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, we got a motion?
Second.
Got a second? Any other discussion? Do roll call on that too, Tina, please.
Alderman Jeff Fancher?
Yes ma'am.
Alderman Roger Gribble?
No.
Alderman Mike Hansel?
Yes.
Alderman Bobby Knight?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mike Profit?
Yes.
Gentlemen, if you don't care, I would like to say one comment. I appreciate, I appreciate your support, I appreciate your confidence. When the mayor asked me to come down here two years, three months ago, I, I had no idea I'd be here longer than three or four months. That's what I was told and I took that to face value. That turned into the 1st of the year and then that turned into just, you know, on and on. And, you know, I appreciate the opportunity. I'll do the level best I can do. That's what I've done for two years and three months. I don't take, I mean, it's not something I run towards. You know, I've, I've talked to my family, my friends, you know, I've been in law enforcement for 39 years, went with the city for 34 and a half of those. And so, as you said, by taking this position, I step away from that. And that's, that's a hard, that was a hard decision for me to make. I also step away from civil service protection, just like has been mentioned here. You know, the last two administrators have been terminated. I promise you, I will not intentionally give you any reason to terminate me, but you don't actually have to have one. It's a right-to-work state and you can, don't have to give cause. So, there is always, it don't matter how good a job you do, there's always that potential there to where that you could still be turned away. And so, I don't take that step lightly. I've been a career law enforcement officer. I've stepped away once before, spent a year and a half in the mayor's office when Mayor Wester was the mayor and I'll tell you, with his family here, without his confidence and support, I truly don't believe I'd be sitting here today without that. And, you know, it's kind of a heavy heart to walk away from something you've made a career out of, but I look forward to the challenge. I think that you all, all your hearts in the right place. I think you're trying to do the right thing. If, if I didn't, I wouldn't wanna be in here with you. If I didn't think you guys were trying to do things the right way and were for it, I couldn't work with you. I'd just say, "Send me on." I'd just say, send me on back down there and give me a cut in pay.
James, we feel like you couldn't do the job we want to vote, I wouldn't have.
Well, I, I believe that, and, and I just want you to know, I do appreciate, I really appreciate it, and I'll do my very best not to let you down.
I had the conversations with the guy from, um, uh-
Pat Hardy.
Pat Hardy, with the state, that works at the University of Tennessee, MTAAS, and had a heart-to-heart talk with him for about two weeks ago. When I heard, saw that this was on the agenda, first thing I thought about was, if James is crazy enough to walk away from 40 years of working in one arena, to take this, and knows his at-will state, loses civil service protection by taking this job, and, you know, I'll be honest with you, when I was campaigning for this job, I wasn't sure. I, I didn't really know James that well. I've known him, who he was, but I've been gone for 21 years. But the fact of the matter is, I've watched the guy work since a guy here. Whether you like him or not, I really feel that him and those two ladies over there are watching every penny we got. There's not that many, not that many pennies floating around. But I really do believe, I can look in my eye now and tell him, I think he's doing a great job.
I appreciate that. And I will say, I'll give you this caveat, if I wasn't so close to retirement, I wouldn't take that gamble. But, you know, I've got about four, four and a half years to go, and, you know, I'm willing to gamble at that, at that close to retirement. But if I was farther away, I wouldn't be willing to gamble.
Appreciate what you've done for the city, James.
Well, I, I truly appreciate you. Thank you.
Okay, the next item, a few months ago, I had some discussion with Wade Wester, and we had talked about the memorial park down here in front of, across the street from Wild Greens. And we had some discussion concerning maybe naming that the Mayor Danny Wester Memorial Park. We have secured, as I mentioned earlier, a letter from the state of Tennessee, who basically owns the property right away through there. I've also contacted Charlie Bogan at the Newport Housing Authority. We have their full support verily. In the type of business they're in, they're not allowed to write any letters of such cause. But everybody that has to be involved in support of that is in agreement with it. So, I need, somebody wants to kind of come to the mic and tell us exactly what the plan is.
Yes, thank you guys, first of all, and I appreciate the, you guys honoring my dad like this. First of all, we're going to, this is all going to be paid for, it's private funding. Nothing's going to come from the city at all, it's all going to be private funding. And we're going to start, if you guys are okay, tomorrow. It's going to be a 12-foot sign right in front of the tree that dad was part of when he was mayor, or vice mayor. And, and we're just going to honor him, it's just going to say, Mayor Danny Wester Memorial Tree Park. And Tim can tell you more about it, but when dad was in office, him and a couple of the people decided to put this in honor of people that had passed away. And now it's funny that my dad's passed away, and now it's going to be honoring him, so... But I just think, you know, you guys know what a special man he was, and for it to be a centerpiece of Newport and drive by, it'll just be an honor. And, but it'll, we're going to start tomorrow, if it's okay, and then August 16th, which is dad's birthday, we're going to unveil it and have a celebration of his life, and hope you guys can come out. It'll be a Sunday, and hopefully it'll get done. Robbie Stalls will be doing the sign, and he's done Parry's Falls Park and our Parry's Way of Metro School. It's going to be the real classy rock, and, but everything I'm doing is going through, through Tim, and I won't do anything without his approval, because he's the one that's going to be in charge of keeping it mowed and all that stuff, so... Anybody got any questions?
Just wanted to thank you and the Wester family and the Brockel family for making this part of something. Danny was a real close friend, classmate, teammate, and all that with me. Just appreciate what he did, appreciate what y'all have done. Thank you.
Thank you.
Tim? You got anything to say?
Bridge is 400, 100 percent.
Okay. Do we have a motion to approve?
Show move.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
Opposes, no? I hear none. I'm going to dismiss myself for that blessing. Mike?
I told Marcia a long time ago, when this election was coming along, make sure she took care of Connie, make sure nothing happened to her, so I wouldn't have to get up here, but I guess the time has come.
Well, I told her that that water fountain was too heavy for me to move. She didn't listen. Thank you, I bless all of you.
Take it, Connie.
You see, you're going to take care of this right here. This is all right here. The next thing under consideration is old buildings, unfinished business. Terry Hertz is going to read this off. This is just a matter of formality, and just a matter of voting on it, because you can't do anything about it anyway, so Terry, you go ahead.
Yes, sir. This is, I'm going to read the captions of three ordinances. We'll need a vote on each ordinance. These are the three ordinances that repeal the annexation ordinances out on the Knoxville Highway. The first one is ordinance number 2015-05, and ordinance to repeal ordinance number 2008-06, that was to annex certain territory and to incorporate the same within the corporate boundaries of the city of Newport, known as annexation area number two, for property funding on Highway 25W slash 70 from Falcon Industries to Underwood Road. Let's go through the second reading.
You need a-
You need a-
Okay. Could I hear a motion for that?
Make a motion.
Second.
Okay, roll call.
Alderman Jeff Fancher?
Yes, ma'am.
Alderman Roger Gribble?
Yes.
Alderman Mike Hansel?
Yes.
Alderman Bobby Knight?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mike Profit?
Yes.
The second one is ordinance number 2015-06, and ordinance to repeal ordinance 2008-07, that was to annex certain territory and to incorporate the same within the corporate boundaries of the city of Newport, known as annexation area number three, for property funding on Highway 25W slash 70 from Underwood Road to the I-40 exit.
Roll call, Tina.
I'll make a motion, I'll make a motion to accept as written.
Second.
You got a motion, second? Okay, roll call, Tina.
Alderman Jeff Fancher?
Yes, ma'am.
Alderman Roger Gribble?
Yes.
Alderman Mike Hansel?
Yes.
Alderman Bobby Knight?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mike Profit?
Yes.
The second ordinance is ordinance number 2015-07, and ordinance to repeal ordinance number 2008-08, that was to annex certain territory and to incorporate the same within the corporate boundaries of the city of Newport, known as annex area number four, for property funding on Highway 25W slash 70 from the I-40 exit to the Newport Utility Service Center.
Okay, did I hear a motion?
I'll make a motion.
I second.
Roll call.
Roll call.
Alderman Jeff Fancher?
Yes.
Alderman Roger Gribble?
Yes.
Alderman Mike Hansel?
Yes.
Alderman Bobby Knight?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mike Profit?
Yes.
All right, the next item on the agenda is bids and purchase and expenses consideration for a backhoe from the street department. I've talked to these people several times, and I think they got a little discussion, because one of the bids is a little higher than the other, but from the information we've got, and the information we get, and the way they repair it, fix it, where you have to send it if it gets torn up, you know, the city's been for the last probably five to six years, been promised a backhoe, they can't do a lot of things. The other one just wore completely out, they tried to patch and patch, but now that we're going to have to get one, I would like to either Ben or Mr. McGahay there to explain the difference, the backhoes, and what you, if that's what y'all need to do. I mean, you know, sensors of difference in the price.
I've done some research on the JCB. It's a bigger, awkward machine. The closest place they can work on it is Chattanooga. I've called other companies that have the machines. It's a part availability, it's a headache getting parts, getting it maintained, worked It's $89 an hour for the time they leave to come work on that thing from Chattanooga. If we have to haul it in there, we might have to pay somebody to haul. We rely on Newport Utilities right being, right now, they'll haul our machines to Knoxville. But, you know, have them drive three and a half hours, that's seven hours round trip hauling it. The case has a little extra feature, it's got a extra power button you can mash if you've got to lift something heavy. It's got a lot of interchangeable bushings and everything for the hoe and all that. I've talked to Newport Utilities guys that run it, it's Jefferson Cock County, they really like the case, have good service out of it. Roy's here with the case, if you've got any more questions, he can answer some for you.
Other than one of the things, like when we used to buy athletic equipment, you know, we found out, these other companies that didn't service their equipment, or couldn't get you parts, couldn't get things, the person that can help you to get parts to you, the time that you're down. And I hear a lot of comments about the case, exactly, that it's best, they don't cost a little more, I believe in the long run, you're going to save a lot more than the $10,000. But, and that's what you all feel like too. Everybody that's worked at city, or not everybody's worked at, everybody's had a part using the backhoe, has told me the same things on what they like, so that's just something to consider, if that's what y'all need or want.
Yeah, like, if it breaks down, we can run and get a part, be back in hour and a half, two hours, you know. Instead, you're waiting two or three days to get it shipped, you're down. I'd love to sit right here and tell you, we can make it that backhoe, but it's on its last leg. It, it's not got enough power to lift something to the left. I could lift more than it can.
Y'all said that five years ago.
Oh, it's shot. But, you know, to me, I, I've run the case, it's a good machine. I'd say the JCB, it's a little bit more bulkier, wider bucket. I have to get in some narrow places sometimes, you know, that's going to put a little effect on me. It's, it's, the case is lighter machine, like when I'm having to set over.
Did you ask if anybody's got any questions?
Yeah, anybody got any questions?
They've got representative, I think, or Ben, one of you, if you've got a question on it, then ask.
I'll ask the question, I mean, is this 580 Super that much better? Is it Cadillac versus the 3CX14 Super? I mean, are we talking about a Cadillac versus Volkswagen here? I mean, you know, this contractor's machinery offers a 70, it totals up with all the equipment on it, $175,000, that are giving a government discount of $71,775. And this other bid is for a total of $79,99. Are we, are we comparing apples to apples here, or is this one that much better than the other?
In my opinion, the case is that much better, but that's my opinion. As far as the, the way it operates and everything. But Roy can tell you more about the different types of equipment. It's been a long time since I was on the JCB, they're big bucket.
Ben, what, you're the man in charge out there, you're the one, you're people responsible for running, give us your opinion about it.
I feel, yeah, we have talked to Newport Utilities, and I took Rick out, and he's looked at the machine, he's got it, he's operated, he feels comfortable with it, he likes the machine. And Newport Utilities, they brag on me, that, that's what they have in Hollywood. They have the silver plan, have the electric plan, and everything. So, I feel like it would be worth it.
The other one's going to have to use it, and I hope we can get what y'all want if everything else is equal.
Well, I feel that Rick has a lot of input on it, because he is my heavy foot in operating, and I feel like that you should involve him, because I'm loving what he uses.
Well, I had a discussion with a guy that did equipment sales for 21 years before he got into the insurance business. Long story short, he said, by far, this Super is the better piece of equipment. But I'm just kind of looking at the numbers here, and just kind of scratching my head, even though I've got, I've heard legitimate reasons why we should accept this one when it comes to to and fro to Chattanooga. The other company's based out of Louisville, right? Louisville, Tennessee? Contractor Machinery? Yes, sir.
I also talked to KUB, they have some of the JCBs, and they also said that getting the parts is the main concern, the breakdown time.
I think you'll save more than the difference in just a few years, you know. Even though they cost a little bit now, I think in the future, that you'll, you'll save a lot more than the extra amount of money you're going to put into it, so...
I think it lasts longer. You know, you may pay a little more at the front, but it's going to last longer.
Does it last longer or anything else?
Right.
Get what you pay for.
You get what you pay for.
Is there a warranty on it, on the product?
He's got a warranty on it, and then we can get a, what is it, three-year warranty?
Three-year extended warranty.
Three-year extended warranty, drives right in and out, hydraulics and everything for 1,800, 1,800.
You can get a bushing for that.
I'm, I'm Roy Thornley, and I represent Contractor Machinery, the case backhoe. And I, I really appreciate the ability to make this quote, and I, I've been selling equipment for 45 years, and everything you said is right, and I've lost as many, if not more than I ever got. But the key here is the downtime. Yes, parts cost more, but I'm going to tell you, they've had dump trucks, I'm sure, like you guys said, in the middle of the street, when you don't need to have them in the middle of the street, but you, you, your downtime is the most important thing in equipment in this, this area here as far as cities and counties. So, I did offer, and it was asked to offer, an extended warranty for 36 months, which it comes out to be, let's see, $1,895. And that's all, that's more than just the powertrain, that's the hydraulics, the valves and everything. But we're real proud of our equipment, and we have sold a lot of case backhoes. JCB is not, they're not here to represent their products, so I can maybe talk about it. They have had five dealers in Knoxville, oh, since I've been here, since 1980. There's none in there now. The people that Rick talked to, KUB had 17 of them at one time, and that's the problem, is, yeah, they got the low price, and it was quite considered to be a low price, but they're solely getting rid of all of them, because they not, cannot keep them running, not keep the crews doing their job. So, I'll talk about the case more than I will anybody, but if anybody has any more questions, I'd be glad to answer.
Like you said, we needed a motion, see if we're going to let them get the backhoe they need, and is that right, Tina, we need?
We need a motion and one you want.
Well, I want to say this, the gentleman who I had discussion with, everybody knows in here, Bill Buddha, he worked in equipment sales for years, and much as I want to do business with companies, I want to know the man I'm doing with, and he gave a thumbs up for you, Mr. Thornley.
Thank you, I've known Bill a long time. Separate from this, from the, he, he changed at the right time, he went to the insurance business, but we're people of our word, and I'd say, I've been in it for 45 years, the company's been in it for 48 years, and we haven't made many enemies at all. Thank you.
This is budgeted money, right? Budgeted money.
Yes.
This is for you.
Yes, and I will say, just to reiterate what they said, in the two years I've been down here, they asked for the, Ben asked, the first thing he asked for each year was a new backhoe, because that one stayed torn up all the time, and we just didn't have the money to put in there. And so, he, he, they have needed this for a while, and I know it's going to be a big help to them in getting their job done, to have a piece of equipment they can rely on.
Been about six years in the making of trying to start this process. Did I hear a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
I'll say it.
If you promise to get 40 years, I'd like you to do the last one. You'll be, you'll be here to make sure and have it.
I won't be, it's to make, tell me you have to make it.
That's to go with the case, 580, Super. That's to go with the Case, five-eighty, Super.
Mr. Thornley, can I expect, I see it says within ninety days.
I put ninety days, but everything changes, but that'll be at the high end, it'll be more like sixty days if I have to order in a short time.
It's payment on delivery.
Yes, sir.
Just checking.
Now, there is municipal leases available that is recognized. I don't think, we don't do any.
We're done.
You know.
Tina.
All right. Alderman Jeff Fancher.
Yes, ma'am.
Alderman Roger Gribble.
Yes.
Alderman Mike Hansel.
Yes.
Alderman Bobby Knight.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mike Profit.
Yes.
We appreciate what the city, we appreciate every apartment, what they do for us. I talked to a lot of department heads, and somebody else I'd like to speak for just a second. You're, this is not on agenda, this is just me, and I've said it before and I say it again, but I'd like to thank David Baradaw back there in the back. I see what he does every day for our city and our county. And David, I just wanted to tell you how much I appreciate what you do. People can't comprehend what you do, but I want to tell you thank you. Okay, Mr. Hurst up here informed me that I jumped the gun just a little bit, so we need to get this other new business. He said he wasn't going to fire me, but he can give me another chance. And this nine is on A, consideration of the first reading of ordinance, two fifteen dash oh eight, amending the zoning regulations.
And soon this has come from the Planning Commission. It's ordinance number two thousand fifteen dash zero eight, an ordinance to amend the zoning regulations in the city of Newport, to amend the permitted minimum height for high-rise signs in the C dash three Interstate Highway Commercial District.
Is that a lower reading of the sign? Mark here?
Mark, Mark didn't address that, I believe.
Is that a lower reading?
Yes. That's a lowering the minimum height that was allowed, which was fifty feet down to thirty.
Okay, and it also mentioned width. Is it decreasing the width of the sign, or is that going to happen, stay in the sign?
Decreasing the allowed square footage from three hundred and fifty down to two hundred and fifty. The only reason why they are doing this so that as the maximum square footage is lowered, it doesn't need to be nearly as large. It won't be sticking out there as imagined or as big as the high-rise signs that we currently have.
So they'll be lower and smaller, is that correct?
Lower and smaller.
Okay.
The others are grandfathered in? Existing ones?
At the fifty-foot height, they wouldn't be allowed to lower it unless they decrease the square footage. And it's pretty specific just for a C three commercial district, that's for interstate high-rise signs.
Do we need to take that?
Yeah, we need a motion.
Do I hear a motion for that ordinance there?
I'm the first read.
For free?
I make a motion as written.
Second.
Tina, roll call.
Alderman Jeff Fancher.
Yes, ma'am.
Alderman Roger Gribble.
Yes.
Alderman Mike Hansel.
Yes.
Alderman Bobby Knight.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mike Profit.
Yes.
Did the next thing on the agenda, Mr. Hurst, you want to read the next resolution there?
It's a resolution number two thousand fifteen dash zero nine, authorizing the city of Newport to participate in the TML Risk Management Pool Safety Partners Loss Control Matching Grant Program.
Gentlemen, just to bring you up to speed on that, that is a grant that we have gotten for over twenty years. If you are a member of TML, based on how much you pay in on your premium, you can, this is basically a rebate for money spent on safety equipment, and it's money we spend anyway. It's not like, well, we can go, we're going to go spend additional monies. This is monies that we already spend, but through this program, we can get up to two thousand dollars back. We spend, I can tell you, we spend more than four thousand dollars a year on safety equipment, but this allows us to get a rebate of two thousand dollars. And so we have gotten this for twenty-three years, and we've always got our money back, and it's, but it's a technicality each year that it's offered, and so far it's been offered every year, and hopefully it will continue to, but it is, it does have to be voted on each year by you all by resolution to allow us to apply for it.
Can I make a motion to accept the resolution as written?
Second.
Alderman Jeff Fancher.
Yes, ma'am.
Alderman Roger Gribble.
Yes.
Alderman Mike Hansel.
Yes.
Alderman Bobby Knight.
Yes.
Vice, Vice Mayor Mike Profit.
Yes.
Okay, next thing, check and see there, read that, Mr. Hurst.
That is a consideration of the East Tennessee Development District contract with the city of Newport. That's the contract with our Planning Commission. That is a typical contract that the city enters into each year to provide for consulting services.
And I will, for the record, that's the same amount as last year. That has not, has not increased. It's the same amount.
Put the amount on there.
Ninety-two fifty.
Ninety-two fifty.
Ninety-two fifty, nine thousand two hundred and fifty dollars.
Okay, roll call.
Hold on, hold on.
Motion for the contract.
Motion for the contract.
I make a motion to accept.
Second.
Okay, roll call.
Alderman Jeff Fancher.
Yes.
Alderman Roger Gribble.
Yes.
Alderman Mike Hansel.
Yes.
Alderman Bobby Knight.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mike Profit.
Yes.
Yeah, we need to do number E, and I'll read that one. Profit, that is a budget amendment for the Grammar School. It's a first reading of, and it's ordinance number two thousand fifteen dash zero nine, an ordinance to amending the annual operating budget and capital program of the city of Newport, Tennessee, fiscal year two thousand fifteen dash two thousand sixteen for Newport Grammar School.
And we need a motion on the first reading.
We need a motion on the first read?
Don't move.
Second.
Okay, roll call.
Alderman Jeff Fancher.
Yes, ma'am.
Alderman Roger Gribble.
Yes.
Alderman Mike Hansel.
Yes.
Alderman Bobby Knight.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mike Profit.
Yes.
Okay, okay, now, we have, I don't think Robert Branham's going to speak, but we've got.
We still, we still got to do the tax anticipation.
Yeah, excuse me, I told them.
Under bids.
Under bids, with number B, the tax.
I thought we were.
We didn't do the tax anticipation.
Oh, right, we did the first, okay.
One thing that Bill informed you, of course Tina can answer the questions better than I, but just to let you know, we only received one bid. We sent out solicitations to all the same places we do every year, and this year we only received one bid back, as I would have.
Well, my opinion on that, the bid that you got is a grand slam. How much as I hate this tax anticipation note, hopefully with a plan, four years, we won't have to worry about this, but the ones I've talked to about said, no, we don't want to be a part of that because it's that good. So whoever negotiated that, I'll give you a pat on the back on that one.
That's one of the things, like we talked, people give us a chance, we're trying to get the city back on level playing field in a few years, you know, we're, no matter, like I say, how it got this way, it's that way, and we're trying to get it straightened up, so people try to be patient, give us opportunity, we're trying.
Well, unless something drastic happens, I can guarantee you it will be smaller next year.
Sure, and we all hope that. You know, just to be transparent, that bid's one point five percent, and you keep, you know, there's no such thing out there, being a former banker, there's nothing, there's nothing that touches that, so congratulations again.
We need a motion to approve that bid.
I make a motion. And for transparency's sake, this is from Newport Federal Bank.
Yes, sir.
Second.
No, I think, discussion. Can't we cut that to five hundred thousand dollars? I mean, we had a hundred thousand dollars over in additional.
Revenue in sales?
Tax this year, so, yeah, sales tax.
But we used it all.
Yeah, I know, but that's, I think everything we get, we use, but I think, you know, let's cut it to five and see if we can make, I mean, my goodness, you know, if I wait another year, see if we do it.
Could we cut it to five, Dave?
That's anyways, we don't have to buy it or.
Would it put you in a bind, surely? Would it put it too close to where we're going? We're getting it straightened up, and I know it's going to take a few years, but how's that going to leave you standing?
At this moment, I haven't even fully closed out fiscal year fifteen. I hope to have that by the end of July because I have to close the year. We did have some positive to the fund balance, but until this first year, until we get the final tax dollars in from the increase, I would prefer to remain at six. If you want to drop it to five, however, that is up to you. We can try and make that work.
I respect your opinion a lot, Tina. I know you work a lot, lot of hard hours on this, and I've been down to talk to you several times and ask you questions, and you've always answered it. It's a pleasure for the board, but.
And from a legal standpoint, the bid is for six hundred thousand.
That's true.
So if we did not want to borrow six, we might need to rebid.
That's a good point. That may be, that rate may be based on that amount.
Well, I'm with Mr. Gribble on this one, folks. I think we need to, the only reason why, I would like for you, my discussion is to open it back up, and it may affect the interest rate. A lower amount is going to maybe kick off our interest rate, but I'm with Mr. Gribble on this one. I think, I think we can get by, that's, that's a big, that's a eighteen, nineteen percent, if I'm asked correct on that one, Mr. Business Teacher, but I think that's a good step to show people what we're, what we're trying to do, Roger.
Right.
It's the board's pleasure.
Tina, what do you, what do you think?
As he pointed out, we do have, the bid is for six hundred thousand, so we would have to rebid if you change the amount.
If you start the process back over, what kind of timeframe are you looking at to get back to this point in order? Because would you have to go back to the controller? Would you have to?
We, we wouldn't have to go back to the controller. We have the approval for that amount not to exceed six hundred thousand. But we would have to have the bids put out in the paper and then have a deadline for them to come back in, so hopefully it would be the August meeting. But as to whether or not we could come back with the same rate or if it would go back up, I kind of would lean towards what Alderman Jeff Fancher said, that it probably would go up. If you're going to lower your amount, they're going to.
But you haven't closed out in a year yet. When will that be? How long is this bid good for?
Well, the bid closed as of the date that we required it, which I think was the thirtieth of June. They had until the end of business day to turn in any bids, so the bidding process is done. This is just whether or not you want to accept this bid. If you want to go back and save five hundred, we'd have to bid out for that.
That would void that bid. I mean, it's good until tonight, so if you rebid it, then it's no, it's no longer anything.
Would that put you in a bind, surely?
I don't entirely know yet. Like I said, I think it's possible we could do five hundred because I think we're going to see some good positive impact, but we will not get any new tax dollars until November. Our crunch time, and that's at the very beginning, most of it comes in, in February and March of next year, I mean, January and February, March of next year, so we won't see the bulk of anything until next year. The thing that worries me about our cash flow is the grants, to be honest. Grants have to be paid upfront. You get your money when the grants are approved. That's up to somebody else. By the time we get the grant money, it's likely we won't need it, by the time we get reimbursed. I would still say go with the six hundred just for those reasons.
We know when, within the next time or time by our turn, but I would, that this six hundred thousand tax anticipation notes shouldn't be here. We're trying to get that paid off. To me, I don't see where it's going to make so much difference in one more year because it's going to be paid off, and that's, there's two ways of looking at it.
Well, the difference is, if me sitting at the banking chair, if we go back to five hundred, I could see Mr. Tribble working with the city, maybe raising that to one point seven-five. I'm just talking from my experience.
You're better qualified.
So the gamble is, the deal is, a hundred thousand dollars at a quarter percent, what does that add up to for a year? So that, that's the, if you're talking about the numbers on black and white. So that's, that's, lowering it to five hundred is going to cost you a quarter percent, but it's also, you know, what's, what's point two-five of a hundred thousand dollars per year, you know, some more?
Fifteen hundred bucks.
Fifteen hundred bucks.
Now, we are open also, keep in mind, we don't have to wait until June to pay this off. If we structure this so that we make interest payments monthly, we can keep it until we start getting that money in, and pay it off a little quicker, and shave off some of the interest, if that's what you're interested, you know, and that would be a good thing to try to lock down.
I'm not really paying it off like that, to me, because you know, you're still getting the debt down. That's what's important, thanks to me.
Right.
Well, in the past, that hasn't been done. It's, it's around the course, but, you know, it's the board's pleasure. I know how I'm going to vote on this, but I just, I wish we'd get aggressive, and, you know, I'm looking for positive things, but you don't know. There's a question mark out there, so I'm ready to proceed.
There's a drastic difference in thinking we're okay and knowing we're okay.
We feel like, Tina and I have discussed, we feel like there would, and we don't know if we get the numbers, but we feel like we're in a little better position than we thought we were going to be. But that's, as Mr. Hansel said, that's a feeling, you know, just based on where we are. We think we're going to get a little bit better shape at the time, but, you know, I'd hate to sit here, and I know she would, because she's a stickler for detail, and say, oh, yeah, we're going to be here, and that not happen. That's still a question mark, so.
My thought process on that, if this feeling, ceiling failing on this city hall right now, six hundred wouldn't be enough.
Well, it's leaking, I can tell you. We've got a leak in the hallway right now.
So, yeah.
They wouldn't have a motion a second to approve the six hundred thousand, but we hear roll call with it.
Alderman Jeff Fancher.
No.
Alderman Roger Gribble.
No.
Alderman Mike Hansel.
Yes.
Alderman Bobby Knight.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mike Profit.
Yes.
Okay, it's thirty-two.
Okay, I believe we've got Wayne Williamson, Speaker Wayne, five minutes to speak, Eric.
Thank you, Mr. Gribble, for putting me on the agenda. Appreciate it. It's interesting to sit here and listen to America work. Fascinating. I'm sure, I don't hear a high for what's said. Clyde Dunn was supposed to be with me tonight, but something came up, he had to be out of town. Connie is aware of that. But when I was here last time about this train ride thing, a few days thereafter, I was in Clyde's office about a little legal matter he was doing for me, and I asked him if he had read about my suggestion, and he said, no. And I told him about the train, and he said, Wayne, I am from a little town sixty miles south of Knoxville, Etowah, and we have an excursion train ride there. And he just bubbled about the value of that train to that town. And he knows the mayor of the city, and he mentioned several titles that he was well acquainted with. He said, I go down there often with my grandchildren to ride that train. And I made Connie aware of it, and they have talked amongst themselves, and each one of them had some health issues, so it's changed things. So it wound up that I went to Etowah on the nineteenth of June to look into the situation. So, it wound up that I went to Etowah on the 19th of June to look into the situation there and see what I might learn about this potential train thing. It was 3:00 on a Friday when I got there, and that was deliberate, I did not want the train to be there, so, because I wanted the opportunity to speak to management that they would be available, and it worked out okay in that respect. Found the depot, wasn't any problem, beautiful little town, and they had a museum in the depot, and the lady there seemed to be knowledgeable, and was very courteous and tried to help me, and on that given day, she said there was 101 people aboard the train. There was 25 vehicles parked in the parking lot, which gives some indication, supposedly, they were tourists and were out of town, they might be downtown Newport if we had such a train. But the primary thing she told me, which was the best news I heard while I was there, she said, I asked her about the equipment and so on and so forth, and she said, every bit of it is owned by an organization in Bristol, Virginia, Tennessee, I'm not sure. She gave me several brochures, which I've got in the car, but she said they furnish everything, the crew for the train, the engine, all of it. All you have to do is furnish the track and passengers, and they'll take care of the rest of it. And Clyde was so enthusiastic about the whole thing, that he said if Connie should choose to appoint a committee to look into this feasibility, that he'd be glad to serve on the committee. So, if, she made it sound good, there are some issues that would have to be worked out by such committee if one was named, and that's availability of the track and the liability of this depot, but if Connie or Mike, you and him talked, whatever you did on that, if you decided to appoint such the committee, that's some of the things that had to face. But bottom line is that there's an organization in Bristol, shall we say, Tennessee, that furnishes everything, equipment-wise and personnel-wise, so if it's doable, everything I've heard since I was here, I believe in March, has been overwhelming enthusiasm about it, but after talking to her, I had a better grasp of the complexity of what she might be doing, but there's people in this town capable of maybe getting that established. That's my story.
Thank you, I appreciate that. I agree with you 100%, I'd give anything if we could. You hear pros and cons, and it's just like, we're going to come up with the money for tracks, the spurs, the train, you know, that's what, you know, I think it'd be one of the best things that ever happened to this town, if we could do something like that. It's just a lot of questions, if you come up with that hole of money, you come from the big boys.
Well, I'll go back to Mike, she implied, money-wise, you know, these people in Bristol, they're going to get high for the fares or whatever the compensation package would be, but there would be, you don't have to go buy an engine. She described the well cars, they had the scenic dome, you know, you'd pay more if you set up there, and tickets were seasonal, so nothing is free, I understand that, but if they furnished all of the equipment, it might be doable.
Is the Etowah, that's not an operational depot, it's owned by the city of Etowah now, right?
It is not an operational depot, Jeff, that was another issue, they bored a shuttle bus in the parking lot at that depot, and they go five miles down the road, and the girl in the library, or the museum, said the reason for that is the liability of someone being injured in the depot. So, that sort of tied back with what I said when I was here back in March, I think it was, whatever we do, get ownership of that depot if you can.
One other question, let me ask you a question, it's because I've heard, I'm for it 100%, but it's north of Southern, they keep saying they won't let it happen, I mean, have you got the same response from them?
Well, they've done it other places.
Okay, now...
If I could interrupt briefly there, excuse me, that one down there has been in operation since 1982. She told me that. So, they were operating on Southern or whomever owns the track.
Well, I hope we'd work on that.
Well, it's, I really think I can grasp the complexity of what we're talking about. But fellas, I'm born and raised on Colby, this is my hometown also, and it's going to go down drain if we don't do something to try to reverse the decline.
Amen.
I'm all for the due diligence on it.
Well, you know, I'd be glad to, you know, I'd be glad to serve on a committee on that night.
We'll get it, Roger, and I, there's some questions I've asked, and I've never got the first base with it, you know, I've asked before, and if they tell you they can't have the track, I don't know where you're going further, that's the...
Well, you know, that's going to take a group to go to Cold Forks, Southern.
They will, we'll work on that.
They work out of Atlanta that control this track, and I know several folks down there and worked with them before, and they're not, you know, if you come to them with an idea, I think it's something that's doable.
I love to have it, just looking.
So, I'd think it's something I'd be willing to spend some time on, tourism, I'm sure would want to spend some time on it also.
Tourism and the partnership, and Ms. Lewinsky, the county's tourism officer, and I would think that Hot Springs would jump all over it.
Yeah.
And Marshall, North Carolina.
Go to Asheville.
All the way, you go to Asheville, and those guys would jump on it. That would be up to the committee to dig into these things that you might, whomever you appoint.
Let's dig into it, yeah.
We will, we'll do that. We're getting concrete answers, so.
All right. We'll work with...
If we're all in agreement on this, let's get some sort of written confirmation, as I know when he said later that we did, we didn't.
Yeah, okay, well, you know, so...
Mike, exclude me from any committee, I cannot hear, I don't know half what's said up here when I'm sitting back there.
Well, I think that Mike should act, serve on the committee, right?
Yes, sir, yes, sir.
And Clyde.
Yeah. Clyde, we'll work with tourism, and I mean, all it's going to cost us is...
I'll get to you or to him, the brochures I have.
Get to Roger first, and Roger get in touch with me.
I'll get with you, the brochures I have.
I'll do everything I can to try to get it.
All right. Bobby, are you ready? Are you going to thumbs up on this?
Yeah.
For Mike?
Yes.
Yep. It's all yes.
Okay.
It's up to you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it, bro.
That's all, thank you, gentlemen.
Excuse me.
Okay.
You skipped seven, and I wanted to...
Was that when Connie was here? We'll blame Connie for it, Tina.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
But I was just wanting to, you had asked, Tanner Preservation had asked to use the Tanner Building for fundraiser on August the 6th, and you, we were partnering with the Tennessee Picnic Association, and you had asked for insurance, and I have the insurance here, and I just wanted to present it to whomever tonight to make it official.
Tina, wasn't that part of what we gave a little donation for, too, was that?
That's for the picnic.
That was something else.
Yeah, that was for the...
And something else.
That was something else.
Okay, so we've got the insurance, anybody else got anything? Okay, okay, Mr. Dawkins? Yes, sir.
I'd like to publicly congratulate James for his position. This is my 28th year in municipal parks and recreation. When I graduated UTC, I started in a little town called South Pittsburgh, Tennessee, a little under 5,000 people on the Tennessee River right outside of Chattanooga. They had a strong mayor form of government, and in the process, they went to a city management form of government, and they went through four city managers before they hired a local person that was capable of doing the job, that was promoted from within the city, and they've been with it for 17 years now as the city administrator. So, us as employees have had the support from our city administrator that we've not had before, and we've also had a city recorder form of government that ran our town, which loved Jack Shepard to death, but I've never had the support that we have from Mr. Fincham. So, I really want to say thank you for what you did for us as, or for the Parks and Rec because he is a friend to Parks and Rec, and he is capable of managing our town and our departments, so thank you.
Mr. Dawkins, I didn't just hear that from you, I've heard it from every department head, I've talked to all of them, and everybody can't be wrong, and so, anyway, I appreciate your comments about it.
Thank you.
Does anybody else got anything they'd like to bring before the meeting?
John.
Okay, John, I didn't see none.
We went through the period, going out of business, going out of business, going out of business, but finally, they go out of business, and signs have stopped, they go, guess what? The signs are banned. Now, we can help.
It's a new business, it's a new ownership.
But our people, I look at all these stores around here, they make with their advertising, or newspapers or whatever, and is anybody allowed to go run up to any number of intersections and put up like a dozen signs that's something? I thought we had owners of these things.
We're constantly confiscating, you know, now, people throw them out there, and they get, and we come through and take them up, you know.
So, I guess we're talking about Appalachian furniture, that you...
Whatever that is.
Okay. They're very aggressive with their campaign signs, for lack of better terms now, you know.
Mr. Robson, you can look after that, can't you?
Well, the thing is, they're always, they're only there on weekends, and what's the logic to that? Let's say we've got a health report, who doesn't work on weekends? Even I can figure that out.
What do you mean, they're only there on weekends? Who's that?
Whoever's putting the signs out, now, you'll see them on...
So, hey.
This is what happened, what's going on, people have figured out that during the week, if we, these properties that the Parks and Recreation maintain, if there's signs out there, we take them up during the work week, and so, they have come to realize that there's limited opportunities, so they'll put them out late Saturday evening and take them up sometime on Sunday, and that's exactly what they're doing, but when we get an opportunity, we grab those signs on parks, properties that we maintain.
I just think it's unfair to the businesses that live here, and they've been here all night, and they don't run out to every intersection, they need to be put those back in their own signs, and if their good march is observable, why should those people be here in the business?
Well, just be aware of it, Tim and Mark, just be aware of what's going on, try to get them up, try to make them stay within the codes.
Mark, is there yes, no, can you put temporary signage up like that? I use the word temporary, and sometimes they stay.
Yeah, the lighting signs, or are you talking about all the...
It's just, well, I've talked to them so much, it's just under 10 to 15 dollars a month, and there are those little signs about that high.
One of them more building, all that, that's...
Yeah, they, just too many of them.
I've heard it's full of signs as I've gained out of the right of ways, and illegal signs.
Yeah.
But, you know, the signs that you're talking about are...
Yeah, they're in the right of way.
In the right of way, so.
And he's never found.
Just be aware of it, get something done, Tim can, Mr. Dawkins can, Mr. Robson can. Does anybody else got anything they need to okay, Mr. Wayne?
I will, I will.
Roger is too, Roger's sort of the head leader on this, ain't you? Well, I make the most of the meeting, Mr. Hurst, as I hear a second.
Second.
You all favor?